And just in time to save us from dad jokes, I'll call the meeting to order. Please throw me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Almit.
Go ahead, Eric. A motion goes to council member Pirschman.
I'll second.
Thank you. Second goes to council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Morgan, you here for community comment tonight? You're just here to listen.
Not yet, but when I do, I'll have some.
We're so looking forward to it. I very rarely speak on behalf of all of us, but I know we're all just looking forward to the day.
We try not to hog the mic because of that, so it won't be an extra word.
Okay, sounds good. No community comment this evening, no presentations and reports. We don't have any public hearings. What we do have is a consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Sarah.
Second.
And a second by council member Pasco. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving along to business item eight point one, the Great River Greening Grant for Riverside Park. Ms. Smith.
All right.
Thank you, I don't use Apple products. Oh, it's still there. I think you can just pull it. Okay, thank you.
Please hold. It's, it's thinking, the light's on.
There we go. It's on our monitors.
Oh, really?
Yeah. You have to turn it on.
Oh, mine was on. Okay, we're good. It's on the big one. Alrighty, so tonight in the packet, there's a letter of support for the city council to consider for a grant with Great River Greening. So the grant is for conversion and restoration of Riverside Park to prairie and pollinator habitat. You have previously reviewed and supported this project. The grant was successful. Unfortunately, the timing did not line up with Maryam Junction Trail staging. So as you know, the trail over the river is using Riverside Park right now for staging of equipment and construction. So we essentially had to say, thanks but no thanks to some grant dollars for Riverside Park, which was unfortunate. But this new round of grant funding was available July twenty twenty six to December twenty twenty nine. So it exceeds out past the Maryam Junction Trail project. So we'd be able to finish this project up, get Riverside Park open with the prairie and pollinator habitat with it. So this same project area is previously reviewed. Archery, bolt launch, horseshoes and campsites are untouched. It is just the prairie area that's in the park right now. It's a hundred and five thousand dollar total project cost. There's a request of twenty thousand dollar matching dollars from the city, which could be funded by park dedication. Oh, no. This is what my screen looks like currently, so. There we go. And then a map of the area. So anything that is hatched is the prairie restoration and pollinator habitat that we'd be looking to fund through the letter of support and grant application with Great River Greening. I will open it up for discussion and comment.
Questions, comments?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Do we have requirements for maintaining it for, like, is there, like, window time where we need to do some extra things?
So, thinking to our time with Great River Greening and Creekside Park, they typically do the planting and then they do maintenance for the first typical two years of the, just to make sure that everything is establishing. We also have some warranty time built in there. So if plants do not establish, we'd be able to go back and get them replanted. But then ultimately, it would be up to our public services staff for maintenance. But the goal of this area is to have minimal maintenance. So they wouldn't be in there very often. And I think it would probably be potentially a mo a year. So it wouldn't be heavy maintenance for public services.
Are we going to cite the trail locations in here or before, after? I mean, this is just kind of blanketed right now.
Yeah, I would say we can. This was just a quick map that Great River Greening put together.
Okay. So is this something we send back then to them with the trails in it or they don't really? We don't want them to plant, right?
Right, correct.
Do it, so I don't want some time and money to do that, so.
They have the maps that we've been referencing for the trail. I suspect they just didn't combine the two.
Okay, so we don't have any, there's nothing to worry about that we don't see them on this map?
No.
Okay, and then just when I'm looking at the second page here on your proposal, it says that the state funding budget is eighty five thousand, our partner match is twenty, and the total budget is a hundred, so.
It should be one oh five on there.
Okay, so is this something that goes in to them?
No, it's just the letter. They gave us that sheet, but it's just the letter.
Okay. So a hundred and five is the correct?
Correct.
Any other questions, Kayla?
No.
Um, Erin? Did I ask you? No, you're good, okay, sorry. Erin, just thinking like of a look of this, I think of like pollinators, low maintenance. It makes me think of like, just in terms of like when I'm trying to see this in my mind's eye, that it looks a lot like the median sun Jonathan Carver Parkway.
Correct.
Too far off?
No.
That'd be my only question. With that, I would make a motion to sign a letter of support of the E N R T F proposal in partnership with Great River Greening Grant for the redevelopment of Riverside Park.
Paul's second.
We've got a motion by Mayor Johnson, a second by council member Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Going back to a work session topic, so we're gonna go back to that kitchen table conversation and we are gonna talk about the strategic plan update. Mr. Mayor. Any pictures of your kids to see?
Grandpa.
You guys are really good at this.
What's happening over there?
You sort of had keep changes.
Oh, sorry. Please hold.
The hard part is you just never know what you're gonna get on that screen. They're gonna be fine.
Keep changes. There we go. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So happy to provide an update on the strategic plan. I'm gonna be a little bit more deliberate on this. One part to kind of review, we reformatted our report on this, took it from more of a spreadsheet look to, I would say, I don't know, a document. Hopefully, that's a little bit easier to read and track. But the second goal tonight is, as we were preparing for the April ninth strategic planning session, this wanted to kind of provide a refresher on what you were thinking a couple of years ago. And, you know, the message that I've given to our facilitator is that we're not looking, at least that's not what I have heard, for a full teardown of our existing plan, but a kind of a booster. So there could be some tweaks to this and some additions, but we're not looking to totally throw this plan out and start from scratch. Is that accurate? All right. So the council's first initiative, excuse me, back in twenty twenty three was an enhanced, enhanced financial strength or a financially responsible organization, reduce reliance on debt, stable and consistent rates, and demonstrated financial strength. So some key targets and initiatives was to increase the cash, offer capital by ten percent annually. So one of the primary drivers for this was to remove our reliance on capital equipment certificates for public services and fire equipment. And so increasing our cash. I would probably add this as an editorial piece that we're, you know, in order to totally eliminate the need for capital equipment certificates and to follow your tenure plan, you're probably looking, you're probably gonna have to increase capital by more than that ten percent. But Lynn and I are working on some informational pieces that can be included in your twenty twenty six budget materials to give you a line of sight to that. Also, a three percent maximum tax rate change annually. So the origin of that comment or that initiative was to reduce the impact to residents, businesses and other property owners or taxpayers with severe inclines or declines in the tax rate from year to year, primarily based on debt service or other initiatives. And then three separate strategies, increase the bond rating. So we're working on a written strategy for that. Develop a comprehensive tenure plan that might seem long ago, but at the time, we were at five years. So that's been completed. And then to create a financial scorecard with our peer cities. So I put this draft together, so Lynn will be working on this throughout the summer, but use these five areas, general fund expenses per capita, water fund expenses per capita, total debt per capita, tax rate, and then the cost of an eight thousand gallon utility bill. So if you have other areas, and you don't need to mention them now, but as we get into the strategic planning session or start to see drafts of other things you wanted to measure or a category in here that you don't want to measure, we're happy to take that feedback. Excuse me. And feel free to interrupt me at any time. I'm not gonna pause for questions.
I'll take advantage of that.
Yeah, yeah.
My thought in this grid is I would like to see cities that don't have trunk fees or, I'm sorry, franchise fees highlighted or somehow like.
Scarred, noted.
Yeah, yeah. My guess is, is that it would be Carver. And that's probably about it. But that's so significant for reasons that we all know. But it makes it, it will not be an apples to apples comparison when we look at, like, especially the general fund stuff. The water might be a little bit more.
Yeah, what we could really, I think, taking that and amping it up, what we could do is franchise fees collected annually, rather than just checking it. So you can.
Would love that.
Measure what the impact is to their overall financial situation.
Would love that. You guys have heard me use the stat of our neighboring community is one year, a few years ago, had more franchise fees collected than our entire annual budget. And I gather to mention that most of the residents probably didn't realize where it was coming.
Moving on to initiative number two, improved operations, an organization that delivers results, satisfied employees, capacity to meet core service demands and well-managed operations. Didn't show Andrew this document today because we didn't want to overwhelm him, but he's got a couple of things to do. But I think he's gonna be great at, and it's interesting enough, there was a, there was like this kind of little device in the water treatment plant that had a clog in it. And, you know, they were, as I was giving kind of Andrew the tour and introducing him to people, Jordan and Andrew were talking about this and Jordan said, you know what, we should, we should really order two of these. So the next time one goes down, we got an extra one on hand. And it made me think of council member Pirschman. So we have the right team in place to get a handle on our asset management and developing backups for some of these systems that need backups. We completed our review, peer city cohort, completed the classification and compensation study and developed the tenure staffing plan that we're updating annually. Moving on to number three, responsive development, development that meets the community's needs. So council had a little bit of that discussion tonight. Expanded commercial and industrial tax base, greater housing variety, another topic that was covered tonight in a vibrant community. You can see the stats for some of the key targets. Aaron's been tracking those and will continue to do so. As far as the initiatives go, complete the corridor study of the former Cassaf forty or Main Street. So we've completed that. We're still working on securing funds for that project. So we'll do another round to that local roads improvement program that the state has to try to get that program funded. Conduct a comprehensive zoning review. Aaron's been working with the planning commission on that. Developing a market plan for development. So that's one of the items that'll come up in the twenty twenty six budget. Aaron also had an idea to apply for some Carver County Community Development Agency funds. They have a grant program. We'd have to provide a small match for that, but something that you'll see in the twenty twenty six budget. Moving on to initiative number four, stable infrastructure systems, safe and reliable infrastructure, reliable infrastructure systems aligned with growth plan, expanded park system. So you can see some of our metrics there, following the service disruptions and the retrofitting. Frankly, kind of aligned to one of the comments that council member Mock made about that overpass, you know, that'd be having to go back and acquire right away at a future date for a flyover or all considerations. And part of a conversation the council should be having as it relates to growth, you know, so that size of roads, size of, sizes of pipes, et cetera. You can see the work that we've done. The park amenities include the upcoming, to be completed, improvements at Creekside Park.
Can I interrupt with a question? So sixteen park amenities, one park and have several? Yes.
Correct. The goal is to have sixteen total.
Okay.
But yes, so like. But the, like, the dog parks would, like, small dog park, one amenity, large dog park and other amenity.
Thank you.
And then finally, focused communications, a transparent and responsive government, an informed community, an engaged community, and a satisfied community. So I provided some statistics related to our last community survey. We're working on establishing a baseline for people that are participating at city events. So I'm working with Brenda Good on that. And we've refined kind of the target initiative, developing a written communications plan. It's somewhat of a, I would call it maybe like a boring exercise, but as, as we start to engage, we want, selfishly, we want to make sure that we have a consistent message on topics because as we go from topic to topic, I think we want to demonstrate to residents what they can expect and when they can expect it. So we can go a different, a lot of different ways. We have a communications plan, so part of it is kind of pulling that out of the closet and making sure that our whole team is involved with a revision to that and then right sizing it for today's needs. So those are the initiatives that I would offer are the foundation or the conversation starter, if you will. So it'd be as you start to prepare for kind of building a new strategic plan, to use the recipe analogy, is one part the existing plan, one part the environmental scans that you'll hear on April seventh from the department heads, and then, you know, using that facilitated discussion to kind of set a new plan and strategic goals for the community and for staff to follow through on. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the plan or just general comments.
Any questions, comments?
I'm really happy to see this plan update, a strategic plan without some measurements and metrics and demonstration of success is just a plan. And, you know, we are, we're not resting on a discussion from two years ago. We've acted on this and we're showing progress in, in a lot of areas. So thank you for the update, and I think it's a good blueprint for, for, for our future plans.
Yeah, I echo those thoughts. Some of these goals seemed way, way, way out there two years ago, and almost all of them seem like we're making progress that we're on track for.
That might mean we need to stretch a little harder, I guess.
Perhaps.
I have one question. On number five, when we're talking about the pending baseline data for the city events, will we have that ready for the, for twenty twenty six? Are we, are we looking at the data through twenty twenty five or did we start in twenty twenty four?
Twenty twenty five. We're, in twenty four, just I, we didn't come up with a good plan of what we were gonna count. And so we're still working on establishing that, but we have the data sets available to count from January. And I'll, I'll bring that list to the council. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent confident that I know what to count yet. It's like, for example, and if the council wants, has feedback on this, but I would say like the, like the open house at public services and the fire department, it's such an anomaly that I don't know if I wanna like have this, like have us take credit for that because I think that is like a built in, people are gonna go to that. And then, you know, defining, do we want that to be like planning commission, city council, HPC, open houses? And I've just been kind of thinking about that during windshield time, and I just haven't found the right answer. But I, I know once we coalesce on what that is, since it's so early in the year relatively, we can track that. But if the council has feedback on what you want to count and what the measurement is for that, like in my mind, like, participation includes, report a concern. When people are reporting a concern, that means they know that we're a resource to help them solve an issue. So that's for sure one that I advocate to be in.
As a city event?
Yeah, as like a kind of an engagement, counting that as an engagement. I, because for like, this is kind of why this has been perplexing to me. Like, I'd count that more as an event and participation than coming to a council meeting, like, with the exception of Morgan, obviously. But I think it's a, a big ask to ask a resident to come, like, to motivate them to come to a meeting. I don't necessarily think that it's a, a gauge of our success as a team to see how many people we can get in the seats at this council meeting. People are gonna, I think, come if there's an issue that's important to them. But there's so many other ways people can engage, like, you know, I've thought about, could we set up a way to, now that we're on YouTube, track the number of views that we have on council meetings? Because if I had the opportunity, you know, to watch the meeting in, in my living room or come down to the meeting, I would probably watch it on TV. I just think that's the way our community is set up. But I just, I'd be lying to you if I told you I have the secret answer or the right scenario here because it made a lot of sense when we did this, but now I just don't know what to count.
I think it would be good to see the list of things that you are counting or considering counting or have been counting. When I look at this too, when we talk about city events, also in my mind, that is, are we getting the numbers from Park and Rec from Chaska? So not just, so the Carver residents are participating in Chaska, but are we also getting numbers for things that they host here so that we can have that?
Yeah, that data's already ready made, so you could choose, yeah, that can be.
That we have too?
Yeah.
And I agree with what you're saying, and we don't have to hash it all out tonight. We can see what your list is. But I, I would not include a city council meeting to me as a city event. But if we have a specific open house where we're talking about something outside of the norm of, of, this is, this is city business duty, you know what I mean? Rather than something that's extra, that I can, I can see. But also, that number is also gonna be weighed a little bit by the size of whatever the project is or the size of, you know, weird effects in town. So I see where you're having trouble.
Right.
Putting like your thumb right on what that means.
So that would be like, I'm glad you made that cut because that'd be like, part of it, my kind of plan was to kind of bring this up during kind of our facilitated discussion is, are we counting something that, like, is the, is the way that we're trying to get to the goal, the wrong path? Meaning if you had a really, if you had a subject that was driving that, that is gonna displace your numbers compared to like an evening like tonight? Or if we said we were gonna talk about some new development in a already developed area?
I think if I remember, I mean, we're talking about engaged community, communications. To me, it was more about how we were building community, how we were building some of these things. And I think you're right, are we gonna be able to quantify the data that is, we're actually looking for in some of these things? So we can certainly discuss it at the next one, but it did, it did catch my eye. So thank you for keeping an eye on that one, and I guess we'll see where that lands.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think kind of what both of you said, maybe this is one that we really dig into because if we get ten percent more people at steamboat days, certainly don't want to see Brenda Good with a clicker, you know, as people are walking in.
She would do it.
Or anyone. Or like, you know, if we have ten percent less people showing up at the farmer's market. Again, it's not a place where I want to see Brenda with a clicker or anybody from city staff, but like, what does that mean? And I'm not sure that that necessarily gets to the what or the needle that we're trying to move here. We're trying to get people engaged, and maybe that's not their jam. Maybe it's your new neighbors who don't want to be engaged, who don't want to leave their couch to attend a city council meeting or to attend steamboat days. So.
That may not mean they don't like living in Carver.
Right.
It just means maybe they have less engagement than, but I agree.
But let's give some thought to that before April ninth of like what that looks like. Because I'm not sure that measuring people at events, maybe it's more engagement of what you were kind of talking about in terms of report a concern or, you know, maybe it's more QR codes in the newsletter and how many people clear through on that or, you know, like, just kind of figuring out what that looks like. Maybe it's more of an engaged from an information perspective versus engaged from like.
Physical body.
Attending a physical event.
And I don't think we can look at the fire department open house or steamboat days and measure that. I don't think that's a good measure of it either, so.
And even like open houses, we had one last year for Creekside Park, and we will have some for the public services stuff that we're doing. And what, if we had a dozen people at the Creekside Park one, I imagine that we will have maybe tenfold that amount for a public services facility, potentially, just because of the impact of taxes and kind of everything about this process. But that's not apples to apples.
People who live in one area of town may not be far less concerned about something that's happening in another area of town. Again, so they, it's hard to measure.
Yeah. Yeah, so something for us to all think about. Any other comments? All right. Did you get what you needed from us on that? Thank you.
Did you get what you needed from me on that?
I think we all have to go get, drive our cars around now for windshield time to think.
On what engagement means and how that looks. Okay, let's see. Up next is monthly reports and communications. Anything else from you from communications? All right, who wants to go first for updates? Chrissy looks like she wants to go.
I do because we did not have an HPC meeting this month, so I don't have anything to report.
All right, Kayla?
Planning commission is on Thursday, so looking forward to that. That'll be the first one on the docket since I was appointed there, so it's gonna be fun. I'm looking forward to it.
All right, Eric?
No update from me.
All right, no update tonight.
All right, I have a few things. All right, I have a few things. March sixth was Day at the Capitol. Eric Brent and I attended. I testified in front of the House Capital Investment Committee and that went well. There was one question after I testified from a representative who was kind of like, remind me how much money you've received from us previously? And kind of like doing the math and he didn't say it. But I felt like the line of questioning was going down, like, why do you need more? We gave you six million dollars. So the reason why we need more is we still have a gap on this project and I'm still out door knocking, if you will, to see who will give us that. So really good opportunity there. Let's see, we got to the League of Minnesota Cities Programming. We kind of had stuff over at the Capitol side in the morning. So we got over to the hotel where the League of Minnesota Cities Programming was taking place just as the governor was finishing up his remarks. And then during the day, we met with Representative Harger and Senator Brunnhagen. Were both lovely and very understanding of our legislative priorities and our need for money for the levy. Let's see, March seventh, we had a Minnesota Mayors Association meeting. We're planning for a meetup in Worthington this spring. And then before the conference in Duluth, there's going to be a pre-conference programming that's specific to mayors that the MMA is working on. And then last week, from Sunday until late on Wednesday, I was in DC for the National League of Cities. So it's part of my role on the League of Minnesota Cities Executive Committee. The entire executive committee went out there for this conference. And what it was, is it was two days of programming on Monday and Tuesday and then Wednesday was the day on the hill. So we divided and conquered and there were other folks from other Minnesota cities there as well. And I met with Representative Pete Staber, Representative Angie Craig, Senator Amy Klobuchar. We also had folks kind of in the divide and conquer part, meeting with Representatives Kelly Morrison and Brad Finstead. We also met with Representative Emmer's people, he was not there, and then Tina Smith's staff as well. We're both not there. But focusing on legislative priorities for the league, which really align pretty well with ours as far as safeguarding local decision-making, increasing housing supply and affordability, protecting and enhancing infrastructure investments, and then preserving tax exempt status on municipal bonds. So the things that we're using to pay for things like a public services facility or a city hall. And then while I was out there, ran into Allison Strike from the CDA along with Minnesota Housing Commissioner Jennifer Ho, which was kind of cool. On March thirteenth, I had my first kind of official dinner with constituents. I had six people around a tiny little table and nobody has gotten food poisoning that I'm aware of. So really good conversation. The conversation that I, or the question that I always kind of start out with in asking folks is, where do you get your information about what's going on in the city? And they're continuing to say the newsletter. So just really emphasizing the importance of that, especially. And then they also mentioned Chaska Herald in that response. I think everybody is still feeling, we're still mourning the loss of that newspaper. Let's see, just a few other things I emailed and Brent sent it out to you guys, the strengthening public service study, which is really fascinating. It's long, but it's a good read. I'm inviting the mayor for a day contest participants, the students from Carver who participated in that, to come to our April twenty-first meeting. I think there were a total of five and I've heard from two parents that they'll be here. And then just a call out of an item that was on our consent agenda, there will be residential organics recycling in Lyons Park, which is pretty exciting. Probably within the next month or so-ish. Coming soon. Coming sometime twenty twenty-five. Okay. All right, that's all I had for my laundry list, that I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
A second by Councilmember Sare. Any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Good evening.